Welcome to the school committee meeting. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second? All those in favor? Mr. Barrett? Mr. Barrett?
Yes. Several hires, Shane Parker, men's, Coach Men's lacrosse. William Phillips, volunteer assistant coach, men's tennis. Ben Deldeho, head coach golf. Tom Murray, co-head coach golf. Carl Reed, head coach baseball. Bob Murray, assistant men's baseball coach. Steve Peroni, volunteer assistant coach, men's baseball. And Brian Cleary, volunteer assistant coach, men's baseball.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to move up item 6A and combine it with 5A.
Second?
All those in favor? Okay.
Yes, as per our previous meeting, we were able to get the report on the cooling study for the three elementary schools. And we were able to get that out to you in the packet over the weekend. We recently received, yesterday, and we couldn't get it out to you soon because we were busy, the updated study on the high school and the middle school. So I asked the committee to, I would like to recommend to the committee, that we really focus our conversation tonight, maybe on the elementary piece, since that's what you've had before you. And it's certainly, we can put it, again, on the next agenda to talk about it as a whole as well.
That's the facility study.
Cindy Gerlach and Lee Dave's here, from our architect segment, and ask them to come forward and, depends on how the committee would like to proceed, would Cindy give you an overview on the report? Or would you like to ask, but what's the overview?
I think an overview would be nice.
Sure. With me today is Kevin Cavanhan from DER. Kevin visited all the sites with me when we went to do the due diligence, and he helped work on, he's a mechanical engineer, and he has worked on the cooling study. So I thought, as he's a mechanical engineer, it's much easier for him to explain the options that we have.
Thank you.
We looked at three pure cooling options. One was a system that has a single condensing unit, and that branches out through piping through multiple indoor units of a system one. System two was a single indoor unit for the dedicated outdoor unit of system two. And system three was window air conditioners. We did a life cycle analysis on those three systems, and this is the report that you had. And the window air conditioners won by quite a bit because of the first cost is pretty low. They're the least efficient, but because of the first cost, we want to question, if we got a chance to review the report.
What are the costs of the three options for the cooling options? I know we saw such answers.
The first cost was tall?
Yes.
Ninety-eight thousand dollars for window air conditioners.
Yeah.
The single indoor unit and single outdoor unit was three hundred thousand. And the single outdoor unit and multiple indoors is five hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Was that option two? Was the?
Five hundred and seventy.
That was.
You didn't reverse.
And that's per school?
Per school.
That's for school.
They vary slightly, but they're roughly the same square footage, so it's going to be one school.
And the average utility cost that you calculated, which was an average of about eight thousand dollars a year, how many days per year did you calculate would be running?
We calculated three months.
Okay, our schools are closed during the summer, so we would probably be running them, I'd say, about ten days a year.
We figured May, June, and September. Just, you know, we didn't really have an idea of what she was looking for, so.
It could be more than ten, but who knows?
If they were in there.
Well, that, yeah, Kevin was saying that if you have it, they tend to use it.
They tend to use it. Do you think three months?
Unless we could control, you know, if that was an option that the committee wanted to go to, it's hard to control the on-off because it would be in the classroom, I believe.
Okay, so you think if they're installed, we should count on?
I would count on a higher number than the lower number, because I think people just use it. You know, again, Cindy said they would use it if they had it.
I think the cost breakdown is summarized on page thirteen of eighty-five, is that correct? Where each school is ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred for a total of, we talked, ninety-eight thousand dollars for all three schools, three elementary schools.
Cindy, we talked today briefly, maybe a little bit earlier.
Yes.
Can you just explain to the committee, Susan, the disadvantages in the air conditioning units? You know, in other words, the air conditioning units aren't, we see units, they're not off the shelf, on depot purchases.
Right.
Can you just?
Sure. And along with that, we did receive additional questions based on the cooling study, and one of the questions was, what would it cost per air conditioning unit? So to start with, we need to get an electrical panel, and that's ten thousand dollars.
And that's to run any?
Even one, right.
Yeah, okay.
Unless you want to short out a room.
Thank you.
So you have to start with that ten thousand dollars, and then for that first air conditioning unit, two thousand for the distribution, and then three thousand for the air conditioning unit. And the air conditioning unit, the cost of the three thousand includes, we estimated five hundred for additional support. These are commercial. They're approximately two hundred pounds each unit.
Similar to that. Similar to the one behind you.
And they stick out, they stick out for that you need that additional support. And then we also added another estimate of five hundred so that we don't have plywood or something like that at the glass. So instead, you have a glass infill around it because it's permanent. It's more heavy, you won't be taking it out, and I don't think they took it out at Pocasset, and those are smaller units.
What did you mean by distribution, two thousand dollars for distribution?
For the wiring, the beginnings of the wiring. First, if you were doing one, there's no economy, so it's two thousand.
Two thousand dollars, and then three thousand dollars per unit.
So then, after that, for every air conditioning unit after that would be four thousand. One thousand for electrical, and the three thousand, like I had mentioned, the two thousand for the unit, and a thousand for support and glass, and also for a cover to insulate it in the wintertime.
And also, one of the downsides of the expansion of the report is that they're very loud when they're running, and it's possible, depending on how the students are arranged, students may not be able to hear. You run into that problem here in the summertime, and they're a good distance away from where you sit.
Oh, yeah.
So you need to just keep that in mind when they're saying noise, that's what they're saying.
Right, and that's where we had put in the report that it doesn't follow current school standards. I mean, right now, two of the schools don't have the unit ventilators, they're very quiet. Now we'll be introducing the air conditioning units that can be noisy when they're on.
And how many, is this to air condition all of the classrooms or some of the classrooms?
That those total, the large numbers are for it, yes.
And can you talk about the ceiling fans as well? I know you guys spoke of cooling the air, but there was the option.
David had mentioned that when we were here last time, that it's not, he said it fast, it's not a cooling, it's not true air conditioning, and he's right, it's not true air conditioning, it's a passive solution. And what it does, it does not change the temperature of the room, it cools the people. So when we said that it can make somebody feel better, four to six degrees cooler, it's the same as when we were all kids, and we made those paper fans, and we put them in front of our faces because it feels better. So it's the moving air. And that's a passive solution. It's a more cost-effective way of, you know, also closing your shades is a passive solution. Making sure that they're closed during the day to not have direct sun come in. So that is, that is an option. However, when it's a hundred degrees out and it's humid, and how many days of the year of the school year is it really going to be that way? It's not going to, you know, everybody's going to be hot. That's, the ceiling fans are a passive solution.
But we wouldn't require any upgrades to the electrical system to run the ceiling fans?
I don't believe it was, no.
You have estimated cost per school for the cooling? That's about thirty-eight thousand.
We had it in the.
The first draft, about thirty-eight thousand.
It wasn't part of the life cycle cost because it really isn't a true comparison to air conditioning with the electrical loads.
I'm just.
Is there any other questions, or is it something that clear that we can help with?
I don't know, is there someone from the Fort Barton PTO who has additional questions?
Sure. Well, I have a question actually for you guys to start. The line item in the budget, the next year's budget for the air conditioning at Fort Barton, what kind of air conditioners? Is that similar to what's here?
For the library?
No, we're looking at the Walmart units.
For the library?
So those would be similar to something like option two in what they described?
It was an outside compressor?
They're outside, you have small compressors, the wiring goes right down.
That's the D R F.
Yeah, we're thinking of putting that into the library.
So that sounds similar to your option two.
And that's in the budget?
Yeah. And that, I believe, was around fifteen thousand, does that sound right to you guys?
That was the first we got at the time, that's correct.
And my other question was just, I think you've answered my other questions about, you know, the modifications to the windows, that's an architectural modification so that there's glass.
Yeah, there's two things. One is having all these air conditioning units changes the architecture too from the outside. But then, to make it a little more permanent, because you won't be taking them out, you have to modify the glass.
Right.
Yeah. And the other thing that is a consideration is just security, and somebody yanking one of those, those units out.
And no concerns about first floor versus second floor with the way that you would be mounting them, they would be safe for any fourth floor of the building, is that right?
Yeah, there's going to have to be different mounting requirements per school. One has that a Luca-Bon metal panel system versus another one has brick, so it's going to have to be a consideration as to how they're mounted.
I think, I mean, I think correctly, most of my other questions are really more of a discussion for the whole group than they are for these guys specifically.
There was one other additional question that we didn't answer yet, which was, how much would it cost for one air conditioner wall unit, window wall unit, for ten days? And that was fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars a year.
Okay, yeah, my, my estimate, being a homeowner who doesn't run an air conditioner very often in June or September, was that we wouldn't be using them three months, but I'm hearing that, and I have to admit, it makes a lot of sense, if your inner room has an air conditioner in May, you're going to be turning it on in May.
I would venture to guess it's going to be a month and a half, maybe not three months, but it's not going to be ten days.
Right. Not the weekends.
And very little may be, maybe not the beginning of May, it might be towards the end of May, the month of June and September, and maybe a little bit into October, depending on the weather. So it might average out to three months or so, so maybe the three-month estimate is a safe estimate to have.
I mean, you're in the building, and so I think you probably have the best sense of how often they'd be turned on.
What is the lifespan?
It actually says it in the report, and I believe it was ten years.
Yeah, we figured ten years for, for the window units.
Then you've got to change the cool.
What does it warrant?
I'm sorry?
Warranty?
I guess it's going to depend on the manufacturer. But that, that replacement cost is worked into the life cycle, and the window unit still went out with full replacement after ten years.
The, the report does say that it's for three tons of cooling, which is thirty-six hundred BTUs, so thirty-six thousand BTUs per hour or so.
This was what was used for anyways, for the report as a basis of design. There's so many different air conditioning units, we're going to, it was asked for information on it, but you can get an understanding of the weight from the side of the unit if I have any information. They're not the same business.
Right.
To use, but it is.
Right, but at least this makes it clear that it's not the kind of unit you pick up at Walmart on sale, right?
If it's size and everything for the class.
That's two hundred and eight volts, whereas President's one would be one forty, you could just plug it in. That's the electrical.
If you have one other question, I can step in again. What's included in the annual maintenance cost?
For which system?
I guess we're talking mainly about the window units for option three.
I think it's just filter, filter cleaning.
Forty-two hundred a year.
Yeah, it would just be the filter, filter cleaning, and, you know, repairs that come up. You're going to have twenty, twenty-five, you know, per, per school, so. Actually, I think we figured the filter cleaning, just where they started, and then it falls off, so it's two filters.
Any questions from the committee? Dr. Larkin? Any questions? Comments?
I have no further questions. My comment is, you know, the three issues I see, cost obviously, noise, number two, and then less significant but still important are the aesthetics. And I think that's probably something that can be overcome by most people who are hot in September and June. Don't?
My comment to the committee is, and I know we said we'd address this, that we have, we have, the price is pretty much in front of us now, and it's late March. I just, I would ask the committee to approach this cautiously because we still don't have the budget approved yet. And we don't, we haven't gone through the F T R process yet. So we have no idea, you know, assuming the budget committee works, you know, our number stays, that doesn't mean there can be an alternate budget put up and we get a dollar more. Now, these, you know, we were looking at these various options, the ceiling fans, air conditioners, and so on, hoping that we could pay for some of it, or if not all of it, out of the surplus, depending on the cost.
Right.
We can't, I wouldn't commit to anything now because we simply don't know what we may need after, what is it, May twenty-seventh, after the F T R.
Right.
That does not mean the committee can't decide on an option, you know, before then, you know, maybe when the whole committee is here, and then say, we'd like to do option D, whether that may be. And if it's bidding needed, we can go to bid after that meeting and have everything ready to go, assuming the F T R passes, that is, you can conditionally put a plan in place. So we're not waiting until after the F T R to wait a month to go to bid, then school's out, and we missed, you know, a whole chunk of warm weather. So I just ask you to keep that in mind, and the budget in mind.
I also think it would be helpful to discuss the full facility studies report. Look at what has been flagged as the highest priority items.
What's that have to be done?
So that if we, say, determine after the budget that we can afford to put X amount of money into facility upgrade, then we can decide what need is greater, air conditioners or boiler, or, and set our priorities essentially. And, and we haven't talked about the high priority items yet.
Well, our surplus is?
If, assuming our budget proposal goes through, we have two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, I believe, earmarked for professional development of computers and things of that nature. So our working surplus would be around five hundred and forty-five thousand.
Right. So if we were to fund this just out of that, it would?
It would cut our surplus, yeah, it would be down to two seven, depending on which option, if you use the, I mean, the air conditioning.
And that would only be the elementary schools, that's not any cooling for the high school or middle school.
You'd have one point five million dollars for a kind of school.
So two options I would think that the committee will look at, is the air conditioning units or the ceiling fans. And then that's all, and that said, as Carolyn just mentioned, it's contingent upon what Cindy and Dave tell us, you know, for the high school and middle school, you know, we get that. So we have the biggest picture possible, so we can make the most informed decision possible. Regardless of what Cindy and Dave tell us at our next meeting or whenever we meet with them again, there'll only be so much we can do with the surplus. I mean, it's a very limited amount, so we have to be very judicious with that as to where we're going to allocate those funds, because we still have technology needs that not in the budget per se are still working out there, you know, as part of the park and just our upgrades anyway. So we just need to be very cautious, but yet still move forward, you know, and not let this just sit.
So, so I guess I have, I have two, I have one, we're probably, you know, you guys probably can leave, I would guess, unless somebody else has questions, because there's not something we can add on tonight with this.
Sure.
And I guess the second is, a little bit of input fee, ask the Fort Barton PTO to weigh in their offer of supplying some cooling to Fort Barton, sort of pending all this. I think this sort of, all this, all of this is pretty well in the future, I would guess. So we need to, should we go back to that issue and start on?
I think Cindy and those folks can go, I think that's.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll be in touch for our next get together.
Yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate getting questions in advance so I can be prepared.
Yeah, thank you very much.
That was very helpful, thank you.
I just think that's something, you know, you might just try to address it now.
Yeah.
I think, I would just say, I'll start. I just don't think, I know Fort Barton's PTO is generous enough to make a proposal, but I think if we do, whether it's air conditioning, we probably should ask the other two PTOs if they would also like to participate in this. So I'm under the assumption that regardless of what the PTO can give us at Ranger, I'm sorry, for, we were going to do at all of the other schools as well. I didn't see this as a standalone Fort Barton air conditioner, that's it. I saw it as a, whatever option, it's going to be all three elementaries, and then possibly a bigger discussion of also how do we pull the high school and the middle school, if at all, if okay with that.
Well, I think if we are using, yes, I think, I think you're right, that we have to, as a committee, try to act as fairly as possible across the system. I think we still have to sort of answer their, you know, offer, and their requests, sort of hear more from, from that, because this feels out of reach for them in the short term. And that was the point of the facility study, was really to find out exactly where we are, and we're getting a sense of that. And it's better than I frankly thought it was going to be from the ride workshop that they had in January about sort of capital assets and sort of where they were estimating Tiberton was, so that's, that's the good news, but it's also a lot more money than I think we're going to be able to sort of decide about in this room. So unless somebody else has objections, we should ask them, ask to have the people at the podium talk to us again.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I'm, I guess I'll use the word impressed to see where this has all led. You know, we, well, not we, Kim started this, what, ten, ten months ago, I think, just coming to you guys with really at that time a request for permission to purchase and locate portable air conditioning units in the classroom. And that has led to this entire facility study, all these meetings, and these cooling options, which I agree with Dr. Larkin, they're, it's a big, it's a big number. And there's, there's a lot of discussion, I think, that needs to take place. That doesn't change, I think, sort of our goals and our feeling that we've now had quite a bit of time to resolve this, and we still would like to and expect to get it addressed before things do start to heat up in those classrooms in one way or another. So I was glad to hear that comment as well. And I think, you know, perhaps we could treat these Fort Barton classrooms as, you know, we'd be willing, more than willing to work with the committee, the district, the other PTOs, and sort of treat these classrooms as a pilot program, and figure out what works and what's most effective. And, you know, we're happy to, to discuss alternatives. I know I still feel strongly that active cooling is going to be an important part of the equation. I don't think that, you know, when I've got anecdotal stories from teachers about wearing ice packs around their necks and having buckets of ice water under their desk so they can cool down during the day, I don't think the fan is going to really solve the issue. So that's, I guess that's where I'd start then.
Kim? Anything?
Yeah, you were asking about what the, what Barton PTO was prepared to offer, and at this time, we're prepared to offer fifteen hundred dollars towards whatever cooling options that we could do for the top floor.
Okay.
About ninety-eight thousand?
Not ninety-eight thousand, sorry. Our soup fundraiser didn't do that well.
Do you have any more questions or anything, or concerns?
My concern is, I'm just, I'm just hoping that even though there's ninety-eight thousand dollars likely will not be available this year to Fort Barton and the other elementaries, that you'll still keep in mind that, like Charlie said, that this is a serious issue at Fort Barton, specifically that second floor. I'm with you, I don't like putting the A C on more than I need to, but twenty, twenty-some kids in a classroom, it's difficult to keep them all cool. We had a lot of parents who complained in the fall when we had our open house, when they had to go upstairs to see their students' classrooms, and they came down dripping, and that was at six o'clock at night.
And that was one of the hottest days of the year. Because I went to the open house, and I said, oh, no, this is not good.
With the western exposure, I could tell.
Really.
Temperatures spiked after three P M.
And I was at Ranger, and it was the same way, so.
Right. So, you know, I hope you know that we're not trying to be difficult, we just.
No, we, we understand. Of course, we are too, and we're trying to solve the problem, you know, but as you said, we, we haven't had our meeting yet, we're still going through the budget process, we don't know what's going to happen, we can never predict that, and so for us to put this up forward and then say, oh, God, we don't have money for, you know, that wouldn't be prudent or responsible, and the citizens wouldn't appreciate it, and I know that. So we'll have to work together, and, because it is a problem, we want.
That is great, and we're willing to sit down and do that.
We want to work together.
Even if we come up with, you know, an option that the facility study has not, just has a temporary solution until something else can be done, I don't think that anybody's saying, not let's, you know, let's not talk about options, we want to.
Right, okay, that's good, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So could we maybe talk about a timeline towards this temporary or discussion approach?
When we first were discussing this, whatever it was, I think it was the end of last year or the beginning of this one, didn't, I thought we had gotten some information about commercial stand-alone units and their ability to be run in the school.
Yes, we did, yes.
Yeah, I have that here.
How much per unit was it?
They were.
By the unit and upgrade.
Unit was, unit was net three hundred and fourteen dollars with a five hundred dollar electrical upgrade, electrical service upgrade. And that was for two units per classrooms at ten thousand BTUs each.
So eight hundred dollars to put two units in a classroom?
So basically, five hundred, the, let's see, electric, five hundred per classroom, and then the unit was three hundred and fifteen.
Three hundred and fifteen per classroom.
Yeah, so, and that would be our people working to. Although, we've just heard that we shouldn't be running those kind of units.
That's why we.
Well, that's the.
This is why we're here. We have this discussion, right? We're back to where, you know, we're back to the circle of.
We shouldn't be running, we shouldn't be running those. Shouldn't be running, we shouldn't be running those units.
Those kind, the four hundred dollar units.
And, yes, in the, in the long term, yes, I would...
And to be frank with the committee, I just looked up the price of a ten thousand BTU unit, contacted our electrician, and, you know, he came in and gave us a rough estimate to make sure that the service would accommodate that unit. So, and then that would be, all the work would be on our end, we would have to put plywood in, it would not be aesthetically pleasing, but...
Now, would that plywood would be for the vent hose, right?
Yeah, if we had to retrofit any type of, yes, if we had to retrofit any type of win, I wouldn't internally recommend you put a unit like that in, because of the second floor, they were talking about, the consultants were talking about covers, and that'd be difficult to reach and whatnot, so.
Maybe the option of a freestanding unit?
If I would choose between the two, I'd fix, I'd pick that, I think that'd be easier for a short-term solution.
A freestanding unit?
Yes.
And how many classrooms at Fort Barton, Mrs. Wardell, would you say require some sort of mitigation?
One, two, three, four, six. Six with exterior windows upstairs.
Yeah, so it's, it's six, second story, westward facing classrooms, you're right.
Again, I just ask the committee, I know Fort Barton came and asked specifically, I need to give them an answer or try to have a response, but I, there's an issue of saying, well, we'll do this for one, and I do, Ranger gets extremely hot, it's all glass, the wind, there's no air movement, everything...
Yeah, no, I'm trying to figure out what the, this is, what, what, you know, if we said, you know, if our parking gave us five dollars at Fort Barton, if the PTO gives five dollars or if Fort Barton gave us three hundred thousand dollars, you know, what would, what would be needed, what could you do with it? And if they're saying fifteen hundred dollars and a sort of not ideal solution, but some sort of mitigation for six classrooms would still be five thousand dollars, more or less.
I know that being equitable is a concern to the district, but things are already not equitable, because some of the elementary classrooms already do have some air conditioning units in them.
That were installed, you know, purchased by PTOs and installed, so there's already a precedent of, no precedent.
So, Mr. Ririck, what do you want to tell?
What I want to do, I very...
Well, we're not going to vote tonight.
I suggest to the committee what the...
We're not gonna, we're not gonna, I don't think we should vote tonight.
Bring the committee back as a whole committee.
Right, right.
Use the plan, that could happen as soon as our next meeting, if policies available. The committee then, as Carol mentioned, looks at the entire...
Facility study.
And then, and even then, I'm not sure after one meeting you guys will be ready to say, we need to do this, 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 and this.
Right.
But you certainly have a better idea than you do right now. At some point in April, or the early meeting in May, if you're going to stick to addressing the cooling issue in late May, June, the committee has to be on a timeline, essentially a one-month timeline, discuss it, pick an option, allow us to bid conditionally, assuming the money will be there later on, after the FDR process. Otherwise, you're going to, this whole, late spring will pass without anything being done. That, that's the timeline.
Right.
Which is why we would love to sit with the committee and come up with a contingency plan in case that money is not there.
And my fear is that fifteen hundred dollars, as generous as it is, doesn't buy as much of a contingency plan.
Yeah, as, sort of an aside, a good portion of the money that we had set aside for the air conditioners has been allocated to field trips because of the ongoing discussion about the, the policy of suggested donations for field trips. So that's also factored into this air conditioning thing and, you know, once we get...
Was the number originally higher? I sort of remembered a higher number.
Yeah, it was originally higher.
I thought so.
If we'd done this last spring...
No, right. No use crying over spilled milk.
Okay, so we'll come back and...
I mean, you have the information.
Yeah, definitely, right.
Yeah.
And you'll come back, right?
I'm here as long as I need to be here.
What, you have...
We have two super old buildings, which we are going to discover so many problems.
Right.
And, yes, it's hot and you might be sweating, but you cannot function, but you cannot function without heat, and we might find out that we might have to pay tons of money to...
I'm not sweating. I have air conditioning at my office, and I think almost everyone here would say they're not sweating, they have air conditioning at their offices, they have air conditioning in the administrative buildings, with the few notable exceptions, administrative buildings, libraries, so I think we need to be careful about the terminology that we use.
Which terminology?
When you said that I might be sweating, or you might be sweating, it's the children.
No, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, no matter how uncomfortable it is, one can survive in the summer when it's very hot.
Yes, definitely.
But you cannot survive without the heat in the, in the winter, where our boilers in both schools, middle school and high schools, are super old, and we might have to buy one of those to provide heat in the winter.
I understand, I understand the issue.
Where all the new schools had no problem with heating, so there might be some other priorities, as we said.
Agreed, and I completely agree with that discussion, that the entire facility study should be looked at and priorities should be, you know, determined on an as-needed basis. We didn't come looking for ninety-eight thousand dollars to air condition the whole school.
I understand that.
But we'll try to find a solution.
So I guess, if I could, you know, I can summarize my feelings of the issue, is that with fifteen hundred dollars, you probably cannot do that much to, you know, mitigate the issues. It's probably not money well spent, even if it's not the committee's money, but your guys' money, your, your parents' money, your organization's money, and that we do need to find out both the full outline of the, you know, other issues of, you know, the full, yeah, outline of the other issues that we need to address, but I also like the idea of at least putting out a provisional bid to see if we found out miraculously the boilers were...
I think what, what you'll find in the updated study is there are some more costs, they're significant, not significant in the sense of the total dollars, but there's some additional costs at the high school and the middle school that we have to, you know, that address, but most of the items in the high school and the middle school reports are of such expense...
You're talking about, or something?
We, you know, but we have to have that conversation, some will be eliminated, like boilers, five hundred thousand dollars a piece, or four hundred and fifty thousand each.
Right.
But that doesn't count the HVAC, another four hundred and fifty thousand at each school, so you get nine hundred thousand at each school just for that. Then you have roofs that need to replace, that's one point four, one point five million.
Right.
I mean, so some of the big-ticket items, you can almost put them, you know, if we had it, we had the Elmo here, you know, you could draw and do it, this is, you just start pushing things to call them bonding issues, and where some of the smaller issues, ADA-approved door handles, we could probably take care, you know, and that's the type of thing we'd be looking at. Then you've got to weigh it versus, you know, then you've got to strategize the whole piece and then, you know, move forward, obviously, but at, you know, the next meeting or two, the committee can sit here and say, well, we want to do, I'm saying we haven't thought of something yet, option Z, and it requires bidding, yes, we can do that, that's what I would recommend, whatever the committee chooses to do, that we try to, we, not try it, that we bid it, so we have prices contingent, whatever it may be, it may not be anything right now, I don't know, whatever the committee wants to do, but if it's something that requires a bid, we can't do it ahead of time, so we got to ready to...
And it doesn't cost us anything to send something to bid?
No, it just costs ahead of time.
And there's no obligation?
No.
No, no.
But you also have to look at the political side of this whole thing, because if you are going to ask taxpayers to dish out whatever, three, four million dollars to basically upgrade all these schools, and is your contingency plan, which you are going to spend on air conditioning, this is not a good PR for...
I think that's what, I think that's what the committee has to talk about.
Yeah, that's what I mean, because we have to talk about the things.
To just talk about it.
Right.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
On behalf of the CACIT, our concern with no, no air conditioning on the first level is that when the classrooms get very hot, you might find doors to the outside propped open, and for me, that's a safety concern, I'm wrong, I don't want anyone to be able to have direct access into the classroom, so that's...
They shouldn't be opened.
They shouldn't be open, I agree.
Yeah.
I've been in there, those classrooms are sometimes unbearable, and I, I get why they do it, of course, priority is keeping that door shut, but it's something to think about when we're thinking about first-floor air conditioning, that is a safety concern.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I'm just going to speak for the old buildings. I'm speaking for the old buildings.
But you're so good for yourself.
Let's go, okay. We have rooms in the middle school particularly, because I'm not very familiar with this building, in the middle school particularly, that will run an air conditioning unit nine months out of the year, that are above the boiler, almost all the rooms on the second floor are ninety degrees every single day, and they're a hundred degrees in the summer. So it's very, it's very difficult for me to sit here and listen to three new schools, and now we're talking about putting three hundred thousand dollars into them, you know, each of them, when we have many, many more issues at the middle school and the high school level. And I hope that this consultant actually, you know, whatever the facility study says, but I do hope that this consultant can actually prioritize for us also between these five buildings, which buildings are best suited, you know, A, B, C, D, to get these units first, if we are going to talk about that. I mean, the rooms upstairs on the, above the boiler, you know, I don't know what you would do at the gym offices, because they don't even have windows that you could vent out anything or hang anything out a window, you know, but my kids go to school in shorts and t-shirts, no matter what the weather is outside, and if they could wear flip-flops all year round, they would wear flip-flops. Those buildings are ungodly hot year-round.
And that would change with the new heating system, what the issue is.
Thank you, Kelly.
As it is, it's warm year-round, in the older ones.
Yeah.
Only what's fit all along.
That's correct. Try a very cold, very...
So we have to look at this whole thing by five schools?
Right.
And, and then, but we also have, remember, we don't forget about you, really.
But on the, Cindy and Dave can be here, we'll talk about it at the next meeting, the facility study, and the facilities that, you know, as you know, people haven't seen it, but the architects have prioritized.
Yes, they did, they put in all the buildings, what needed to be done right away, what could wait, all those things, so that was good.
And there are, as you're finding in the new report, there is some, some work that needs to be done on the new schools, even with the new, with the emergency lighting, that runs about thirty thousand a school.
Yeah.
So, that's why you need time, because Carol...
Oh, yeah, we do, yeah.
So if you do have questions on the second, like Carol sent me some questions, I'll just send them to the architects.
Right, she likes that, because she can answer.
I don't have the expertise.
Does it make a difference, do you think, whether we wait till the next meeting to make a decision about putting it out to bid?
I think, I think we should start talking about the facilities, if, if the issue of cooling didn't exist, I still have been working on the facilities.
No, of course, right.
So, yes, I think it's certainly what, have it on the next one, to talk about it, get an understanding.
Okay.
Just have one more question, I don't want to belabor this.
Oh, that's okay.
But as I've said, I agree with looking at the full facility study and taking a triage approach, and, and I understand that these are new schools. If we were just requesting permission to do this and not expecting any financial contribution from the district, what would the committee's reaction be to that?
So knowing that the panel costs ten thousand dollars, the first unit costs five thousand, and every additional one is four thousand?
You know, and maybe it's, it's probably not option one.
No, that's, that's the cheapest one, that's option three.
Wait, what?
So either, or either that, or even, you know, doing something, even with a freestanding unit on a temporary basis.
So are you asking if, if you came and said you want to spend fifteen hundred dollars no matter what?
If, if we...
Would we let you?
If, if, you know, we thought we could get the money together...
Fans, yeah, fans.
The cost, the cost is absolutely minimal, but these units are going to cost, I don't know, hundreds of dollars per year in additional costs, electricity costs, I think this is negligible, but basically, there cannot be any cost component in your proposal, which we're supposed to approve here without doing the same thing for all other schools. So this is negligible.
I would just, I would just ask that you make the decision, you know, the whole committee.
Right, of course, we're not going to make it tonight.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just kind of sounding there, I just wondered about the idea...
I think we're going to have to take a vote on it, and see what, how people fall.
Well, we approved a lot of things, pretty much, how our ways of operating was basically whether these were through sports or anything like this.
Right, right, yeah.
If you, if you raise money and there's no additional costs we will have to pick up over the years in the future, then why not? Why would we block that?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree with you, but if there is, if they were to, someone was to say, I'm going to spend, you know, twenty thousand dollars to build you a merry go round, but you have to run the merry go round for the next thirty years, that's a different story, then if they say, I'm going to spend twenty thousand dollars to run the merry go round, and I'm going to run it for the rest of the, you know, until the end of the world...
We're talking the same thing.
It's a, okay, fine, we'll build a merry go round.
I know that you had, you had a study done on the floor by the energy company?
Yeah, it was the largest.
Okay, the electric company, and they had come in and they had stated that the cost of running the fans was more than it would cost to run air conditioning in those classrooms.
Yeah, I remember that. But, so you should ask the architects.
Right, we'll check on that, for sure. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Take you. Okay, um...
It's hard to vote.
Was that the facility study, or you want to do the, do it again?
Do it again?
Do it again?
No, 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 no.
Not tonight, so let's go to ELA Common Core. Is it Diane?
Well, going from air conditioning, which is actually tangible to something, it will become tangible, and I've asked Diane to give the committee, those folks at home, an update as to where we are with the implementation of the Common Core standards in charge.
So, yep, just as a reminder, this is a collaborative effort in conjunction with Bristol Warren, and we've done the same approach for our science curriculum and our math curriculum. We began last August and will continue through till the end of the school year. We had a good representation of teachers across all grade levels participating, and I'd like to take an opportunity to thank them, they've devoted countless hours to the process, and then we also had an equal number of teachers from Bristol Warren participating as well. They've been working very hard, it's not easy. The work was facilitated by a consultant by the name of Sorrell Moreau, she's from the Educational Development Center out of Newton, Massachusetts, and she was extremely knowledgeable, very supportive of teachers, and able to recommend a number of research-based programs and approaches that have informed our work. This is a timeline for our work. As grades, levels complete the units, they are considering if any of them can even be tried out this year. We're not expecting for full implementation in September, we're taking it very slowly, and the progress of each grade is really varying, so we want to kind of have a more flexible timeline for implementation. And the format of our curriculum documents will be consistent, as I said previously, with what we've done in other subject areas. So this is a listing of some of the resources and guiding documents that we use to inform our work, and we took a different approach with this, all of the work, and the teacher's work as it was developing was saved on an online collaboration site called Course Sites, so we were incorporating technology in there for our teachers, and that's a site that they could use with their own students as well. These are the goals of our project. The units of study that we're developing will actually be similar in format to many of the units that we're currently using, so I'm anticipating it will be an easier transition. We're building off of the current strengths from our ELA instruction, we'll be maintaining certain components such as the phonics, spelling, and fluency that we currently... as the phonics, spelling, and fluency that we currently use. We'll also be maintaining some of the instructional routines, such as readers' and writers' workshop that you might have heard teachers reference to, and small group instruction. And then, as we do this work also, we're looking for opportunities to integrate science and social studies and ELA. That's a very helpful approach with students, and it's helpful especially at the elementary level, where teachers have so many subjects to teach in so little time. And also, within the process, we're identifying areas for professional development that will be needed. So within Common Core, there are a few areas of focus that are a little different than what we're working on right now. So the next few slides just provides an overview of those focus areas. In reading, two of the main areas are an increase in the amount of informational text that we're using with our students. So informational text would be text that students would use to research a topic, or also it could be used to complement a nonfiction story that they're reading, just to get some background. And also, selecting text that has rich and varied vocabulary and language to develop those skills. In the areas of writing, there's an increase in argumentative writing and informational writing within Common Core. So a little bit more than what we've done in the past. So that will be a shift for us. And across all grade levels, there'll be a focus on conducting multiple short research projects. And lastly, within the area of language, there's a greater focus on vocabulary instruction within our new curriculum, and looking at vocabulary taught within a variety of contexts, and how words are used, how the meaning of the words change, and how they can, the word can have varied but related meanings, meaning, excuse me, meanings. So greater emphasis on vocabulary. And just, this is just a brief summary of the changes, what's in for us, what's out. So, little bit of a shift here and there for us. Our progress to date, we've looked at a variety of curriculum units that were developed by other states that are good models for us. Many of the units that we are adopting or that we're looking at seriously are from Massachusetts or New York. Teachers are evaluating the units with a rubric that's called the Equip Rubric, and it was developed by Massachusetts, New York, and Rhode Island for the purpose of guiding curriculum development and the selection of resources. This is an example of what the rubric looks like. And this particular section of the rubric is looking at the alignment to standards, those focus areas that I previously referenced. So teachers would take a look at resources and units to see if they align to the standards. And then there's another section of the rubric that's quite nice, that also looks at student engagement. Are the lessons engaging to students, and are they able to meet the needs of students reading above grade level or below grade level? This is a sample of one of the scope and sequences that we've developed. This one is for Grade Two, and is based on a majority of the units from Massachusetts. The units are very comprehensive. They have lessons, assessments, and recommended literature. So I think they'll be fairly easy for us to implement. This is an example from Grade Three. I believe we've discussed this one at a previous meeting. Many of the units are from Engage, New York. And if you'll notice, at the very last unit, I have in blue noted Voice Thread. So they've integrated technology into some of the units. And this is an online collaboration tool that students use to co-create texts and presentations and reports. So it's nice to see that already in there. At our PD Day on Friday, teachers spent some of the time looking at the, our, the teachers from the writing team presented the work that they'd done to date, and got feedback from their colleagues. And overall, the responses were very favorable. So that was a way for us to involve other teachers who are not on the writing team, and to get their input and ideas. And lastly, just our implementation, we're strongly advocating for a gradual implementation of the new curriculum, giving us time to try some of the units in one to two classrooms before formally adopting. We're also looking closely at professional development for writing that will support improvements in our instruction. And we want to make sure that we don't throw out what's working. So we're working very hard to look at what pieces can we maintain that are still aligned to the standards and that work well for us. And then, as I mentioned previously, to the extent possible, trying to align our ELA instruction to other subject areas. So that is basically it. Happy to take any questions if you have any, but we just wanted to give you an update on where we are. Any questions?
Dan, what does this represent? I can see the footnote here that's...
Summary of changes.
What's the, what's the overshoot of that? Who, where is this? No, is this footnote here basically the reference?
Yeah, that didn't come out to what's in, what's out.
Yeah, what is, what is that there?
That's the one that...
I know, but what's...
The text, where is this text coming from? This is, obviously, we can see how important the left column is comparing to the right column.
Yeah, so there was a document that was created, it's called Using the Publisher's Criteria. And the Publisher's Criteria was a document that was created to help publishing companies navigate the standards and to understand what's in and what's out, what's new, and what's changing within instruction.
Driving the books, which I can't...
Correct. Because as we all know, publishing companies had like this much within their programs, very difficult to teach from. So that document provided them with some focus as to what school districts would be looking for.
It's a bit of a rhetorical device, this slide, sort of reading any old text.
Right, I'm sure that when we were teaching the old standards, we would not agree that it was...
We were reading any old text. Right.
Yes, exactly.
Right.
Oh, I, I did...
It wasn't very kind of them.
No, it wasn't. No, you're, you're true.
People trying to make a point, right?
Right. I did have a question about the timeline. It looks like so next year, we'll be implementing this Common Core-aligned ELA curriculum gradually. You say some units will possibly just be tried in one or two classrooms to begin with. And yet, all of our students will be taking the PARC assessments at the end of next year. So we're being assessed on the curriculum that we're just starting to implement.
Correct. The teachers have made some changes in their instruction. We went to a number of workshops over the past few years, and teachers are aware of the shifts in instruction, and they have been able to do some of those instructional approaches now with the current texts they're doing. So, for example, close reading, requiring students to cite evidence when they respond to a question about text. So we have slowly started to do some of that. We are just a little hesitant to, to completely go with the new curriculum until we're sure that the resources to support it are there, and that the resources are the right resources for us.
I understand.
So that's why we're being a little bit hesitant. However, as we get closer to the end of the year, I am seeing that grade levels are more ready to start than probably, I'm probably underestimating our ability to start next year. So I'm just putting that in there. I don't want teachers to be under the impression, or parents that come September first day of school, everything's completely new.
The math wasn't ready either.
Right. And you have to test things out, and you make changes as you try them.
And that's what Diane's trying to say, is just that, that it's really a complicated and time-consuming process. And we are, in other words, our kids will be taught, the Common Core standards will be integrated, you know, throughout the course of the school year. You know, will the units, is, you know, all aligned? You know, probably not, but we're working, you know, that's what we'll be working towards. So, and again, we've only had, as a district, because the money, as we talked about before, for Race to the Top, was only released to us two years ago. And we did the math first, because we thought that was going to be more complicated, and now, now the ELA. So, and even science, we're still tweaking our science, which isn't Common Core-based.
The next generation.
Right.
Yep.
But we're still tweaking that, and that's two years old, so.
So I like, yeah, but I like the fact that you're blending it, you're keeping what worked. That's very important to me, because the recent NAEP scores that came out for fourth grade, we were top in the country in Rhode Island for fourth grade, which is the benchmark of if they're going to succeed. And I'd hate to throw all that out, since it was so successful. So I'm glad we're blending it with what worked before, and bringing this in so the children will be ready.
It's important to note that the Common Core standards aren't a curriculum.
No, I know. They're standard.
You know, and I think that it kind of, it gets interchanged. We talk about that chart, it gets talked about as, you know, sometimes it gets, I don't know if it's an issue, I don't think it's intentional, but people talk about the Common Core, well, that's going to be the curriculum.
It's not.
It was a benchmark to each grade level that the kids have to...
Yep.
The problem with the terminology, because when you say Common Core, you think...
That's right.
...or a body of knowledge.
That's right.
Teaching, and it's not that at all. And I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I think one of the things that Carol was getting at is that rides picture of this as much rosier in terms of the time loss, as they, you know, sort of funnishly let us know a few weeks ago.
That's why we've asked, you know, and we've made it clear. I made it clear at my meetings, Diana hers, and we're no different. You know, some districts may be far ahead of us because they have the resources, but there aren't many. I doubt it. And I think a lot of districts are in our position. And that's why we're very hesitant to, for that first year, not to be a baseline year, to serve as a baseline year. But, you know, that's, we don't want to go back to stuff we already talked about. But that's kind of where that, where we've been coming from, because we know what, where we're going to be. And it's just not real, you know, we just don't think it's realistic.
We do appreciate all the hard work that you and the teachers are doing.
We really do.
They are doing a lot of hard work. And also, the building principals have been very supportive of the process, making sure that teachers have substitutes, are able to get out of the building, allowing them time beyond that to get together and share and to have their discussions, and just being there for, for teachers to help through the process of change. And we've all had the discussion about looking at carefully at what is working for us, and making sure that we just don't move too fast away from that.
And how are the teachers finding the process?
Yeah. The teachers on the writing team are, yeah, it's, it's hard to make those decisions. They're big decisions, so that's another reason we're going slowly. It seems when they find a unit that they feel is a good fit for their students and for alignment to the standards, that they're very happy with it and very comfortable with it. And like I said, the, the reaction from teachers on Friday were very favorable. So...
I think the significant, the change that teachers are going to be faced with, just not at Tiverton, but statewide, and every state that's adopted this, is going to be significant, from K to twelve. You know, especially, I think more at the elementary levels, because they're going to be required to teach more in-depth, and more, you know, information that was maybe waiting, you know, will you wait until fourth grade, fifth grade, it's now going to be down to your second and third grades at some point. So there is quite a challenge for our teachers.
And every transition takes time. I know, in my district, we've worked with argument writing. And argument writing is something that the Common Core calls teachers and students to begin working on in elementary level.
Correct.
Even if seventh and eighth grade teachers next year do a fabulous, top-notch job teaching argument writing, the fact is, students will still only been taught it for one year. So, all of the vocabulary of claim, counterclaim, rebuttal is brand-new to them. They can't possibly do as well after one year of practicing argument writing, these eighth graders, as they will say five years from now, where they would have been introduced to argument writing, starting in second and third grade.
Yeah, it's true.
So, you know, everything builds on each other, so, especially these new kinds of writing or reading skills, after one year of it, you're not going to see the results.
We're picturing about three years of solid instruction for us to really see it ingrained and to see the results. So...
So we're trying to inform ourselves of all this that's going on. I started in Bristol Library. The parents from Barrington came over, and then the Elton Fall River had a session. And then the latest one we went to was Freetown Lakeville. And what the woman said there that had not signed off on these things was, involve your teachers, work with them, support them in moving through this. Because they, the school committee asked her, what can we do? And she said, that's the most important thing you can do, is, you know, involve your teachers and support them. So how can we support the teachers? Is there technology they need? Is there...
Well, I think, you know, it's, it's multifaceted. It's, you know, if we had our brothers, we'd have more professional development days, you know, where teachers aren't being pulled out of the classroom, you know, to be, to do the training, which is the model we follow. We did use our ten hours quite effectively that we had. And ten hours may sound like a lot.
But it's not.
It really isn't. And, you know, there will be requests, you saw it with the principals when we did the ECA last meeting, requests for technology, you know, to help, you know, improve the instruction in the classrooms. I mean, it's, it's just there. And textbooks, textbooks don't really even exist.
No, I know.
Textbooks themselves are going to go the way of...
Well, they told us at that meeting not to invest in the textbooks, right?
Well, because everything's going to be digital.
And that goes back to the digital learning presentation that we, when we talked last week, or at the last meeting, that there's going to be more online reading, so we need the technology. Teachers need the professional development to do that. And from the student's standpoint, we need to find a way, and I don't know that we can do it with our existing staff, to teach early keyboarding skills and those early technology skills for students just to be able to access. And one example, our elementary librarian is trying to teach elementary students to use the online catalog, and realizing, gee, elementary children don't spell so well. It's even more of a challenge. But, you know, he's one person between three schools, and we don't have a schedule for formal technology instruction at the elementary level. And we're just, so we're really struggling with that component. So as far as support, definitely, technology is, is, will be needed to implement this appropriately.
And the support that we do get is all local. There's nothing from the state that comes to help us with any, to answer your question.
I know.
Whatever we do, able to do, you know, what we can scrape together.
So you say ten hours of professional development. When I went back to teaching after I had my children, I thought I had a lifetime certification. I found out I didn't anymore because of every form. And they said I had to take a hundred and twenty professional development hours. They paid for all of them, but that's what we were required to get, our recertification, all the teachers, no matter who we were, in Massachusetts. So, we talk about that all the time. But, I know when my kids went to high school, when it first came out, all the computers and everything, my daughter came home and said, I looked at her schedule, I said, why are you taking keyboarding? You know, you're not, you're not in music. She said, oh, no, that's the computers, mom.
We had great battles when I...
But, I mean, that was when it first started, that they had to take keyboarding, and she was in ninth grade. And now the little ones, you know.
Remember the battles over keyboarding, right?
Yeah.
Now, all the kids knew it, so we didn't have to teach it anymore.
Yeah. But mine didn't, yeah.
Just get taken out?
But when mine went, they didn't. So, they had to learn it. So everything's going so fast now. Now the first grade is, you know, supposed to know the keyboarding, and they don't know how to spell.
Right.
We have a lot of work to do, and we'll do it together.
Well, thank you for your support.
The teachers and the parents, and everyone comes together with us, and we'll get through this, you know. Okay.
Yeah, I'm, the next item is the boiler bleaching. Did, in our last snowstorm back in February, it was called in because the vent from the boiler room, the chimney out back, disintegrated. Because it was fifty years old, and it seemed like it, literally just, excuse me, dissolved. And there was about a four-foot gap between the two buildings. Called the building inspector, he came over, and gave permission for us to jury-rig something on the condition that we go out and bid. We have the bid request from Doug. Did get a quote, it was twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. And I'm requesting that we go out and bid for that one, to see if we can get it for less.
Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Follows in favor? Okay.
Well, the next item, I'll call it irony or whatever, the amended calendar.
Oh, no, utilities.
Oh, sorry, utilities, I'm sorry, Doug has...
Yes. We're fortunate, the district's locked into our electricity and natural gas contracts through 2016. But currently, the markets are higher than what we're paying, and I constantly monitor them. So what I'm asking the committee is, we can extend what our deal is past 2016. And because these markets change on a daily basis, I need to lock in on a certain day when I get the quote from the supplier. So I'm just asking the committee, when I see it, an opportunity to potentially extend our contract, that I lock in on that day and then bring the contract... that I lock in on that day and then bring the contract subsequently to the committee for approval. And that's not unlike how we've done the last couple. There isn't a lot of urgency, because I think electricity is through December 2016, and gas is through May 2016, but you never can predict the market, and usually this time of year, it dips a little bit, so I just wanted to keep an eye on it, and if I saw an opportunity to, to take advantage of it.
And that's Rhode Island Association of School Committees?
Yes, between the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, actually, both these contracts are through them, so we have a supplier identified, and we can work directly with them and.
So, that's a good collaboration.
Follow the markets, yes.
They mentioned that last night at the town council meeting.
Yes, that's, we, actually, the town, I, I had some correspondence with the, the town administrator, and he also has been taking advantage of the agreement through the League of Cities and Towns. And they have a very advantageous rate as well, so it depends when your contract is up, and it pays to monitor continuously.
Okay, so do I have a motion for that?
Make a motion that we give the security this permission, charging.
Discussion, no, all those in favor?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Care about jumping the gun?
Thank you.
Assuming we have school tomorrow.
Hopefully.
Asking the committee to approve the revised calendar, so I can send it up to RIDE. We've missed four days of our school due to snow. Originally, we were supposed to get out on June 17th, that now pushes us to the 23rd of June, so. And if we did have to cancel, I would revise this and make the 24th the last day.
Okay.
So, I don't have to come back, but as of right now, cross our fingers.
Okay.
This will be our revised calendar that I'll submit to RIDE, so if you could approve that.
Okay, do you need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the revised calendar for this year?
So, now, do we, can we, just in the case, if we have to cancel, can we provisionally approve that?
It's a given.
Add a day.
Yeah, it's given, I'll do that.
Okay.
Second.
I don't think you need to.
Any discussion, any questions? No, all those in favor?
The next is the proposed calendar for 1415. We're trying, we're doing things a little differently than we have in the past. I talked to the union leadership and took some of their suggestions. One of the things we're going to do is combine new teacher orientation and teacher orientation day on one day, so that means we can start the first day of school on August 26th. Also, since this is a primary election year, there's no school that day, but we would like to do our first PD day.
Oh, good.
On that day, so we don't have to take another day.
That'll be good. They can vote on their way.
If they so choose, they certainly can participate in the electoral process. December, we originally were going to go through the 23rd, but after talking to the union, they were willing to give up February 13th as another PD day, and that was normally a day of no school, just no school. So, we traded, kind of, horse traded that, so there'll be a PD day in February, the day after the parent-teacher conferences, so. Barring bad weather, we would get out on the 16th of June.
That'd be nice.
Make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Any questions? No, all those in favor? Okay. Resolution, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, the, this came through, I believe, from Mr. Duffy's office. And it's, regardless of where it came, but I think it came from Tim's. We've, we voted on this resolution, I believe, for a similar one the last couple of years, so I saw it. I put it on, and then Jan asked that I put it on as well, so. This is a school committee resolution, which would, basically, comes out against the contract continuation provision. Not making mandatory. So, I could be for the committee for consideration.
So, basically, this is just saying, you know, if they, if the contract continues indefinitely once it runs out, or the provisions of the contract continue indefinitely once it runs out, it sort of disincentivizes the.
Saying that, saying they don't get the benefits.
Right.
That they had in their previous contract.
Right, so it makes them want to negotiate a new contract as opposed to just continuing the old contract, hoping for something better.
The theory, I believe, is to put a little more impetus on the part of the unions to negotiate, assuming that they're not trying, but some have in the past, you know, said, well, we get what we get paid anyway, so there's no urgency. There's no urgency, so that might provide it, so.
There's also a problem, if, for example, for some reason, time runs into deep trouble, we have the cap on the budget, and the contract says we have to give everyone particular raise, now we will be canceling programs to meet our general obligations, and.
So, so could I have a motion anyway, and then we'll discuss?
I will make a motion.
And you can discuss.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
But the, the way contract continuation has always been interpreted in the past is not that teachers would get a raise once the contract was expired, but that whatever they were paid in that last year of the contract, it would be the same pay, so essentially, they'd be taking 0% increase until something else is negotiated. I personally have, have concerns, serious concerns about trying to run a school district without any contract in place. I know that in the past, some school districts have been excited at the possibility of waiting for a contract to expire so that they could unilaterally impose cuts to teacher salaries and benefits.
So, you see its providence decision.
Yes, and ultimately, it came at a very high cost, both financially and otherwise. I do think that a contract protects both parties. It protects our interests as well as the teachers, so that if, at the end of the contract, and, and there are many years when we're not ready with the next contract immediately, if we were to be in a condition, a situation where there's absolutely no contract in place, yes, a school committee can decide to unilaterally withhold 10% of teachers' pay, but the teachers could also just refuse to do bus duty, hall duty, lunch duty, to attend faculty meetings, to stay past their last class of the day, because there's no contract that demands that. And I'm not sure what recourse we would have without a contract in place, were that to happen. So, ideally, I would like to see some kind of contract continuation legislation that would include strong incentives for both sides to negotiate in good faith and, and to reach an agreement on new terms. And barring, you know, barring that, I, I, as I said, I just don't see how it benefits us to have no contract in place. And generally speaking, and 2008 was an exception because of both the Great Recession hit and health insurance costs were, were going up, but mostly the Great Recession hit, where it was very difficult for some districts to even maintain the same salary, 0% increase. But usually, for us to just sit, it's the teachers who, who aren't happy, because they don't want to sit year after year on a 0% increase.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I don't think it serves anybody's interest to not have a contract. And parties negotiating in good faith can always decide together, well, we're still negotiating, but for the next six months, we're going to continue the provisions of the current contract, even though it's expired. What I would be reluctant to have is legislation that requires us to do that regardless of what the conditions on the ground are. And I think, you know, keeping that out of the, you know, out of law, and just sort of allowing us to negotiate with our partners in the way that we see fit at the time that the contract comes up, recognizing that, you know, both parties are interested in having a contract, because as you point out, it protects both of us, so.
I, I guess, the only, the only concern I would have there is that, I agree, given this present school committee, that's the approach we would take, but we've seen East Providence take a very different approach, and there could be future school committees in Tiverton who would take a different approach.
Absolutely, we can't control that.
Yeah, and so, and so that's why, you know, some sort of contract continuation with strong incentives, whether that's a financial penalty from both sides that has to be paid into a pool for the mediation, should they not reach a new settlement, you know, in certain times. But I'm not willing to say I would not, I would rule out supporting any and all proposals that would have contracts continue in place.
Okay. Janie?
Well, I, I, I agree that it's nice to have a contract, but obviously, it's to the, I agree, it's to the benefit of both sides to have a reasonable contract and provide good, reasonable working conditions for all the teachers within the means of the particular community, but we cannot forget that our main job is to make sure that proper services are provided to students based on the current needs for what's best for the students. And these services have to be delivered by the teachers. For that particular reason, having contract continuation takes this control away from our hands, so we cannot react to whatever changes might happen, for example, with how we deliver education within the district, because the contract simply did not make these provisions, in the same way as Carol makes a valid argument that this can be abused if the situation when talking about East Providence, but at the same time, we cannot overreact based on what happened in East Providence, because we can overreact in other directions, simply saying, what happens if there is a union which simply refuses to accept the fact that, that there are some changes which have to happen, which can, how we deliver education, and simply, we are not going to do it, and just hold us hostage, we are not going to take any, any salary increases for a while, and you're not going to do it. Is this going to happen? I don't think so, can it happen? Yes, like, the same thing could happen, what happened in East Providence?
An abuse of school committee or an abuse of the union will subvert whatever law is present. But I would prefer to have a law, not have a law that compels us to continue a contract if we choose not to continue the provisions of it, or conversely, we may choose to continue the provisions of it while we're still negotiating, but I'd rather, I agree with you, I'd rather still have the flexibility at our disposable, disposal, rather than make it a matter, you know, legislative mandate.
Anything that takes incentive from people to talk, I think is counterproductive. When someone can simply say, I will walk away from the table because I have a deal, and I will stick with that.
Mr. Barrett? Nothing from you?
He's too smart, he knows, look like some people.
No, this is a policy decision.
The one that is in the middle of it all?
This is a policy decision, this is.
It's rightful, they'll stay away from this.
Okay.
This is truly, and what everyone said, and I know I sound like a, you know.
You agree with everyone, Sally's line?
Everybody's, you know, everyone has a valid concern, it can be abused by both sides.
Right, it's true.
And quite frankly, I will say, I don't think it stands much chance of passing, because it fails every year, but.
But it's valid points from everyone, really.
You know, you're just talking, I guess, I don't want to minimize it, but it's, it's a resolution we're talking about, we're not trying to.
No, I, I absolutely agree, what, it, it seems that resolutions that are voted up or down by school committees rarely have an effect with what happens at the general.
Unfortunately, they don't, they don't work that way. But you can't stop saying what you want to say.
Right, but it's, it's true, it is a discussion to be had.
Invalid points.
I think this pressure is being put on communities for a very, very long time, and if people are simply going to remain silent one of these times, the trigger will be pulled. And so, it is not without meaning, because Association of School Committees represents probably the biggest lobby, and Tim Duffy is at the State House all the time, and, for example, the fact that out of X district, 90% of them pass these type of resolutions, it still tells legislators what is at stake on the ground in terms of how people feel about it, and I think it is important that we, we all speak with, with a voice, that.
Any, but any questions from anyone? No? Okay, do I have a motion, I have a motion in a second? All those in favor? Again? Okay, thank you.
See, I wouldn't have won anyway.
Thank you.
I could say that now.
Oh, now, you've won some votes.
No, no, no.
I've seen you do it.
No, 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 that's, for one who has to negotiate said contracts.
That's what I said. You're in the middle of it all.
Prefer to, yeah.
We have announcements and reports?
Al has a.
The wireless project is halfway completed, we're about a week, week and a half ahead of schedule, so I hope to have it done sometime beginning of May versus, beginning of June, if we can push through a little faster.
Any, oh, yes?
I just have a quick question. We just recently found out that there was a level-three sex offender living, like, right near us, and we were never notified. And one of our parents called the chief of police, and we were wondering, he said that we should have gotten something from the school.
We send out what they, what the police department gives us.
And I did send something out to the schools not too long ago.
So, does that get distributed, like, we have, like, there's a paper at Pecassett, which I saw.
Goes to the schools, and then the schools are responsible to get it out to the parents, and whatever way they do that.
Because the chief of police said an email was supposed to go out to all, from, from the school committee, maybe, or the?
School committee doesn't.
Or the superintendent's office?
Comes usually from, when we're contacted, it comes from our office, central office.
Then we submit it.
So, that's per school that we should have, like, say, an email went out to?
We send it out to all our schools. We send out the, the information they send us, the picture.
Information, and it usually has a little picture.
Right, yeah, we saw the picture, but then a lot of the parents, like, I have middle school parents that live in the area that had no idea. So, we didn't know, because we don't get a thing in the mail anymore.
And it has to be.
Comes to you from the police.
Right, and it has to be.
From you.
They have to live within a certain.
Goes from us to each school.
And then we send it to the schools.
To the principal.
I send it to the schools, and then they're responsible to get it out to their parents.
Send it out to their parents.
All schools regarding all.
Because we don't know, for example, like, in this example, we don't know which middle school parents, we don't know which middle school parents.
Right.
Living near that person, so.
And do you know, is that usually a connect ed message, or?
No, it's usually.
A paper?
It's usually email.
Yeah, because we didn't get, as a Pecassett parent and a middle school parent, living, like, he's a street over from us.
Pretty sure there's a ranger parent and a middle school parent, I didn't get one.
Yeah, and I have some other middle school parents who actually are, like, can see his house from their backyard, and they didn't hear, they had no idea either.
That's a very.
We expect them to find it.
Okay, thank you.
I have one hanging up in the office, and I'm, I'm just curious.
Sterling Drive.
Oh, yes, that did go out.
That's the one, I happened to see it at school, I saw the picture at school, and took a picture with my phone to show my daughter.
We'll make sure the principals get it.
Yeah.
I'll redo it.
I can understand not sending home, like, the flyer, so the kids would see it.
They really should, because, they really should, because the picture is there. The picture is there and all the information, and that's what, as a parent, that's what you need to see.
Exactly, well, I took, like, as a middle, my daughter's in middle school, too, my little guy's only in elementary school, but I took a picture to show my daughter, but I can understand not sending home with the kids, little ones, because they'd be.
We would send something like that via email to the parent. We wouldn't, we wouldn't send it home in the backpack type of.
Well, I know it's hanging up at the Pecassett.
I know that one in particular, that one I'm certain of.
Yeah.
Because I know the area, I know Sterling Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
Okay, so, one announcement is to please come on Tuesday, April 15th at 7:00 p.m. The Tiverton Unified Basketball is playing against Portsmouth Unified Basketball, the Tiverton High School.
What is that?
April 15th at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday.
I've got a game tomorrow against.
And youth, the youth activation campaign is to get as many fans in the stands as, as they can, so that will be nice. And tomorrow, at what time?
3:30.
3:30 at the middle school, at the high school. They'll be there. And our electric car was at Rhode Island College, went up there to the Science Expo, and the car was there with all the, it was really good. Kohog Man's at the town hall, we. there with all the, it was really good. Cohog Man's at the town hall, we introduced him last night to the town council. And Friday night, the youth activation had a volleyball tournament. They invited all the kids to come in, it's really great. And there's food and pizza and everything, and they had the tournament, and the teachers won. The teachers won the tournament, so the kids were really upset. It was really fun. And then I don't think they walked the next day, they were like, you know, no.
Quite blood in those.
No, no, this is serious stuff.
You don't throw the game.
Yeah, so, so today...
There's a lot of pride on the line.
Right.
It's getting money out of it.
So today, the, our students went, I think it was 26 of them, went to New England Tech to see the school and the classes. They went with Linda Lawson and Mr. Phillips on the bus, and they spent the day there. And she said it was a wonderful day, and the kids couldn't believe the welding and all the exciting things that were going on. And they said, this is really our class, this is what you'll be doing. So it was a great, and the only people that were invited were the schools that had school-based coordinators. So if you didn't have a school-based coordinator, you couldn't be involved, so I'm glad we have one, and that we were able to spend the day there. So we thank Mrs. Lawson and Mr. Phillips for doing that for the day with the kids. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Briefly, Mrs. Black, we had the bid opening for the food service manager last Thursday in conjunction with Barrington, Bristol Warren, Portsmouth, Middletown, and Little Compton. There's three vendors that provide the service throughout the state. Unfortunately, we lost one at the pre-bid meeting, they opted not to show, and then another one didn't show for the actual bid opening. So the participant was Charple, is our current provider, they weren't aware that the other bidders weren't going to participate, so we did get a very favorable, or at least in the opinion of business managers, a favorable proposal from them. We're going through the process of putting together the contract that RIDE needs to approve, and then as soon as they get it back to us, we'll bring it before the school committee for, for your recommend, for your approval. They made some significant concessions in our fees, and most importantly, they have a break-even guarantee with us, so we no longer will lose any money regardless of the amount of the loss.
That's great.
In the past, we had a guarantee up to, up to the amount of their management fee, now it's just an unlimited guarantee.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So that was a very positive development. So we should hopefully have a contract in the next meeting or two for the committee to review.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? No? Okay. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session under personnel matter SS 42465A1.